To call this meeting to order, please stand and join me and join us with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. To the right, the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any persons wishing, may I get an approval of the minutes of the July 10th meeting, please? Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes, and can I get an approval for the agenda, please? Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. You know, before I move on, I just should probably note that Board Member Todd Tulkey is out of town today, so he cannot join us, so it's just the four of us. May I get an, uh, motion to approve the agenda, please? Or did I do that already? Conflicts of interest, any conflicts of interest? Oh, we did it.
Oh, it didn't?
I did not do that one.
So, no.
No, we don't need to make a motion.
Okay.
All right, no conflicts of interest. All right, now may I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. And the emergency declaration resolution, Rich?
Yes, Rich Clune, Vice President, Finance and Operations. I finally figured out how to clear out the room, has moved myself up on the agenda. So you have before you, and I think there was in the, in the board documents, the pictures of the damage that we incurred. You know, clearly this creates an emergency situation for us with school starting in the next couple of weeks, so what's before you is language with a resolution, making that declaration of emergency, and what that allows us to do is set aside the bid law requirements where we have to go out for a competitive bid. We still try to do as competitively as we can and try to get some competition and do quotes, but we don't have to go through the formal advertisement process and things of that nature, so it just helps expedite it. So that's kind of what's before you at this point.
Okay, I think we had proposal for some language changes.
I just would offer that we amend the language in that paragraph starting with "be it further resolved that the administration take whatever" and add the language "reasonable and rational" before that to action.
And I'll rewrite this so that it reflects that language and will be reflected that way in the final minutes, so.
So can I get a motion to approve the resolution or the emergency declaration resolution with those changes? Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, same, opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes, or resolution passes. All right, reports of the President. Thanks, Rich.
President, excuse me, President Parker, members of the board, Jim Jacobson, Vice President of Academics. Today's academic program overview is our Gen Ed team, and it's my pleasure to introduce them today. Representing the Gen Ed team is Deborah Hunkin, Sarah Gillis, Phoenisha Foster, Kristen Larson, Kristen Wellnitz, Jeff Van Overbeck, and David Kavanaugh. And the one thing about our Gen Ed team is they're probably the one common thread that we have throughout all of our programs in providing those soft skills for all of our students, so I will turn it over to them. Thank you.
Thanks.
President Parker, members of the board, good afternoon. My name is Deborah Hunkin, and I'm English faculty at Southeast Tech. On behalf of the general education team, we'd like to say thank you for this opportunity to fill you in a little bit about the recent curriculum changes that we have gone through. But before that, we'd like to talk just a little bit more about the team. Sarah Gillis is English faculty, and she'll be starting her fifth year this fall. I'm the other English faculty, I'll be starting my 28th year this fall. We also have two full-time members in the math department, Kristen Larson and Phoenisha Foster, and they have combined over 12 years' experience at Southeast. We also have two faculty members in the psychology department. Dr. Dennis Russell isn't able to be here with us today, but Kristen Wellson is, and she will be starting her seventh year this fall. And then to round out the team, we have full-time speech teacher Jeff Van Overbeck, he'll be starting his 15th year, and then David Kavanaugh, sociology instructor, and he'll be starting his 27th year. So all together then, we have eight members of the Gen Ed team. In order to qualify to be a full-time general education member, each of us needs to hold a master's degree plus 18 graduate credits in his or her specialty area. A full-time teaching load at Southeast is typically 12 courses. We'd have six courses in the fall and six courses in the spring. Additionally, and routinely, the general education team also teaches extra sections. We teach evening sections, online sections, and the Gen Ed team, almost everyone from the team taught this summer, and we just wrapped up the summer session last week. So essentially, our general education curriculum falls into two tracks. We have a transferable track and we have a non-transferable track. And Sarah is going to talk about the English changes first.
Good afternoon. I wanted to give a little background on why we made these changes in our general education requirements. We recommended these changes just for some programs' curriculum sheets. Again, Deborah mentioned the transferable track, and we recommended that some programs on campus move more to what we're calling our applied general education courses, which include and emphasize more workplace-related scenarios. Other changes that occurred include a renumbering of one of our math courses and a renaming of a math course, which one of our math instructors will talk to you about later. When it comes to why we made these changes, the biggest reason for recommending these changes was to try to make coursework more relevant and to better align it with what the programs are aiming to teach the students in the first place, which is to be ready for the workplace. And so it is our intention that these courses will be more relevant for students. We aren't losing any of the rigor, but that they will emphasize more workplace readiness scenarios and will emphasize those soft skills that many programs, many employers are noticing that students across the United States are lacking in terms of readiness for the industry. It is also our hope that students will achieve higher success in coursework as well as in graduation. When it comes to how we're implementing these changes, we've been working with incoming students at our AAR registration sessions to register them for these new courses. We're also giving current students the opportunity to continue on the transferable track, and some are choosing to do so because they'd like to go on to a four-year institution, or they may transfer to, to the new coursework, the more applied general education courses. We are still offering our transfer-level sections throughout the academic year at many different times and delivery methods, and we also are offering our new applied Gen Eds in the same manner. So we also wanted to note that financial aid isn't affected here, accreditation is not affected, graduation plans all remain unaffected, so it's a positive change for, for students in that regard. Specifically, when it comes to the English curriculum, composition is our transferable course, and that emphasizes longer, research-based argumentative essays and documentation style, whereas communication in the workplace focuses more on those soft skills. When communication is different in an industry, it's typically different for an auto student and a health student, and so communication in the workplace is more adaptable for those students. We cover such things as memos and cover letters and those, those workplace scenarios and case studies that are more applicable and relevant to the student about to go out into industry. I'll turn it over to math.
Can I ask a question, going back to that?
Sure.
Moving from that composition class, which you said was transferable, to the communication in the workplace, is that communication in the workplace a transferable course?
It is not, no.
Is that, okay. Is that composition class not being offered at all anymore?
No, it's continuing to be offered throughout the academic year.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
For our math changes, good afternoon. We were working more on vertically aligning our classes so that we had a more systematic approach to how students were going through the math courses. So our first change was just basically a number change. Math 100 is our college math class. That teaches more of the applied Gen Ed, you know, a lot more real-world workplace situations. That is what most of our programs take is Math 100. So we're basically just changing the number, and in a couple slides, we'll see why. The content of that course is not changing. And then Math 101. So we're changing that class a little bit, because what we found out is that our Math 101 class and our Math 102 class were kind of overlapping in topics, and we needed 101 to kind of lead into 102 more. 102 is our transferable math class. Most students that take 101 are going to need 102 or 116, which is our algebra trig class. So we changed it from intermediate algebra to introductory algebra. We took out some of the function-related topics to keep in 102. So hopefully, it's a little bit more of the developmental algebra information in that class. So I think this is a good visual. So Math 100 is that college math class, and then we have Math 101, which is introductory algebra. From 101, they can take kind of two different tracks, depending on programs. Math 116 is algebra trig, and then Math 102 is our transferable college algebra class. And then some of our students, like our engineering students, would then move on to another transferable math class, Math 120, which is trigonometry.
All right, well, good afternoon. I will just speak briefly on the changes of psychology. What we did was, once again, we offered, we have been offering 103. Basically, we've renumbered it. The content of the class will not change at all, but just putting it in order of applied and then to the transfer class. And we will still offer many sections of both of those, but just for those students who know that they are probably not going on, maybe emphasizing the 100 as a better option for them, where they are getting the workplace readiness skills and those soft skills. One thing that we did do is, both Sarah and I sat down when we were aligning our curriculum so that the communication in the workplace and the psych at work. If there are topics that are covered, we take different approaches to them. So Sarah looks more at the communication stance, and I look more at the psych stance. And if we do cover the same thing, we're covering them from different angles. And even in some of our assignments, we've aligned it so that I do the prep work and then she's furthering the assignment or vice versa, so that we catch students who are taking both, but then also we hit on them for students who are only taking one or the other. And then in our traditional psych, nothing has changed. That is the transfer course, and that would focus on your traditional psych theories such as Freud or Carl Rogers or those different approaches. And so the workplace psych, though, is just taking more of a skills-based approach, and we very much make that complementary to whatever field the student is going into. So on most of the assignments, it's like, apply this to your scenario as an auto technician or working with diesel engines, excuse me, or working in business or wherever it is that you're going to be going on to, so. Right now, we did not recommend any changes for sociology or speech, and so that will just stay as is.
Because our mission is to complement all the other program areas, we wanted to make sure and talk with all those other program faculty. So as we were developing and designing these ideas for consideration, we met with different program faculty, we moved this through the curriculum committee, the course met with administration, and essentially, it's the trades that are moving to the non-transferable, making the coursework more relevant for their industry connection. We still have a great majority that are taking the transferable track and will continue to do that. So that concludes our report, and at this time, we had entertained any comments or questions that the board may have.
Any questions?
I was just going to say, I think, when people think Gen Ed, they kind of have you on the general, you know, like it seems so general. And what I liked about what I heard from many of you was that, you know, yes, it's a general, it's required for everybody, but you really specialize that for what that student is studying, and I think that brings a lot more meaning to them. You know, nobody likes to take their general classes because it just feels like it's busy work, but if you're going to a class and you're actually applying it to, how is that going to affect me in the workplace that I'm going to be in? I think people will be more engaged and it's a lot more meaningful, and they'll walk away with more than, we're all going to learn today about what happens in the hospital, and the people who are working on cars are like, who really cares, you know? And so it's great that you have been able to really cater that to those specific plans of study so that they're actually going to get something out of that and take something with them.
Yeah, and that is so true. We see that engagement, and we think that's going to then follow through with even better retention.
Right.
With more completion for the students. And the end result of course is what's in the best needs for the students and the industry.
Yeah, and if more people can have those aha moments that are specific to their plan or their major, I think that's even better, because when they get to that real-world scenario, maybe they can think back to, oh, we kind of talked about this, and I didn't think it would maybe happen, but wow, it did, or, you know, and, and actually, we reach back and get some of that knowledge that they got from your classes.
Each one of us sits on at least two or three program advisory committees, and so we're hearing all of these soft skills needs from the employers, and so we'll pull that into the classroom. And, you know, and if a student doesn't think maybe this particular project has meaning, we'll say, well, you know what? When we were at the advisory committee, so-and-so from this company and your future potential employer, and all of a sudden, they're more engaged, they find that it is meaningful, and that's, that's good learning then.
Yeah, good, nice job.
Any other questions? President Parker, we would ask that you acknowledge our report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion to acknowledge the reports? Second. Any discussion? I think it's just another great pathway that we offer students, not just in Sioux Falls, but the community, so I really appreciate all the work that you guys have done updating these classes and, and just, again, another great opportunity, so thank you. All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. All right, it's passed. Thanks, President Griggs.
Good afternoon, President Parker, board members. Thank you again for the opportunity here to have some of our programs come forward and provide a little more background on their areas of expertise and how they touch our students every day. I think in particular, as Jim introduced him, they called them the Gen Ed team, and I think they function very much as a team collaborating, sharing information, and they were the, the drivers behind the adoption of these applied Gen Eds, and it's something that some of our sister institutions, Lake Area, and I think Mitchell to some degree, have been moving toward, as we have discovered as students go through, in particular, the trades programs and leaving some of these courses. And Board Member Ryder, I think you talked about that in terms of always not sure about how this fits in, and I'm going to leave that until I'm done, and sometimes that becomes a hurdle to graduation, where the idea behind the applied Gen Eds is that it will actually help them in their chosen career and profession. So thank you to the team for being here again and, and for allowing us to present on that topic. I had a couple of quick items to report on, the first being the employee handbook update report, and as the board's aware, with collective bargaining going away essentially last spring, we did quite a bit of work on campus with the six collective bargaining groups in terms of having to work with them to make the election as to whether to stay under collective bargaining with the Sioux Falls School District or stay in their positions at Southeast Tech. That was a lot of discussion and, and working, again, individually with the bargaining units. I think we had five individuals that elected to move to the Sioux Falls School District or stay under collective bargaining, so four custodians and one clerical. So overall, I think we had very minimal movement, at least from Southeast Tech. The next project that was really critical was to take essentially those pieces that were in the collective bargaining agreements and then move them to something that will continue to govern terms and conditions of employment. So really, I would say, May and June and the first part of July, we were heavily engaged in developing some language to bring to the campus. That was introduced on July 5th to the campus, and actually, I think now you can go on STINET and under the school board link, you will have direct access to the draft, our current first draft of the employee handbook. What I would propose is that we will be bringing language in the, or for the September meeting that will revise or potentially create new policy that we would ask the school board to act on, and that language would be something along the lines of instructing Southeast Tech to, or having the authority to create a, an employee handbook that would provide, again, guidance for our employees in terms and conditions of employment, but that instructing Southeast Tech to review it periodically, if not annually, to revise, and we felt in that manner, every time there was a change, if we changed one paragraph or one sentence, we wouldn't have to bring it correspondingly to the next board meeting, but rather providing some flexibility for the campus to respond quickly if needed. So we'll be bringing that forward at our next board meeting.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, I just know how much work is involved in employee handbooks. That's something that we do, I do as part of my business outside of school board, and generally, it's for small companies, and there is, there's a tremendous amount of work that goes into those, doing them right, and then, you know, updating and staying current as both state and federal law changes to make sure that, that the handbook is in compliance with, with all the laws. That's not a small task, and you, to complete that in basically 10 weeks, 11 weeks, that's a huge job, so.
Yeah, it was, and I think there are a number of individuals. Kathy Struck from the HR department did a very good job providing some guidance and also some peer institutions in Wisconsin, some, one in Milwaukee, and then another that was very, I think, helpful in terms of, they had the same situation in Wisconsin a few years ago with collective bargaining going away and then needing to move rather quickly into development of an employee handbook, and so we asked and received permission to use some of that language. We used it sparingly, but we did use it, it was good guidance, and then from our sister institutions, I think Western Dakota as well, some language there, so. I think more importantly, as we go forward now with the start of the fall semester, we'll have an opportunity to provide more opportunity, I should say, for comment and feedback. We've had four forums, but over the summer, a number of faculty are off-contract, they are just not around, and so we did provide an online link to a survey instrument and, and received some pretty good feedback, I think, in relation to various portions, but there is a lot there, and I suspect it will be a work in progress as it develops over time.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Right, can I get a motion to acknowledge the employee handbook update report?
So move.
Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Right, that passes. All right, new program development report.
The, the next item is an update as well in terms of some of our past discussions, and our academic team and faculty have been doing a very good job in, in terms of looking at some opportunities for Southeast to expand in terms of offerings in one area, and somewhat reflective of what we've heard also from our sector breakfast initiatives, that has been very well attended by, you know, business and industry in the area. We have four welding certificates that are new, that are being offered for the first time this fall, and again, somewhat directly in response to industry telling us that it isn't necessarily the two-year program that they would like to see, but rather the ability to create a, more of a pathway. So starting by providing a few courses within that particular area that leads into then our one-year program in welding seem to be a good fit, and so that work has been done and completed, also with medical billing and coatings, another area where we have a, a new certificate going forward. We have business management leadership and an accounting clerk that are also in construction or underway, and again, most of that is directly from these various sector breakfast conversations. I think another important piece that we have heard directly from industry is that, and the governor's office frankly, is that we'd like to see more apprenticeship opportunities. And Lon Heard is not here today, but he worked with the Sioux Falls Home Builders Association. Jeff Slep, one of our faculty, did a, a great job with home builders and applied for a grant, and we were awarded the grant and start, and we're starting on August 22nd here, the construction apprenticeship with Sioux Falls Home Builders, and we hope to have 16 students in that program, you know, going forward in the fall. In addition to that, Lon has been working with some of the different plumbers in town. Career Blaine had a plumbing apprenticeship, and they've asked Southeast Tech to look at taking that over for them, again, providing another avenue for workforce development in the area. So we are meeting on that, and that's been very positive, and it looks like that will go forward. A third apprenticeship, actually, we just had a meeting last week with the Sioux Falls Dentists, it was the Sioux Falls Dental Society, it's 126 dentists in southeastern South Dakota, and they approached Southeast Tech about the potential of, well, actually, they, they approached Tiffany Sanderson from the CTE at the state level, and she brought in Southeast Tech in, in terms of, into the conversation. But Southeast used to have a dental apprenticeship program, I think it was from 2007 to 2010, roughly in that time range, and it was a very successful program. I had a root canal recently, and the dental assistant that was working on my tooth was actually a Southeast grad and so forth as well, so, at least I think she was, I was under some medication. But it was a program that, that was, I think, very successful, but if you remember, 2010, 11, the economy went a bit down, and from that, I think area dentists were often retracting and not expanding, and that condition has certainly changed today. So from that meeting last week, we are going to have some more conversations and see if that apprenticeship opportunity is something that they would be interested in Southeast Tech bringing forward. So another area. A fourth area, though, I'm very excited about, and this was out of, again, our construction trades sector breakfast, we've had three construction contractor meetings now, and we've had industry really stepping up in some instances, very much so Dave Derry from Henry Carlson, Bob Jardine from Electric Supply, and they have taken some leadership in the development of a carpentry certificate, or what they'd like to see Southeast develop as a carpentry certificate. And we've also had meetings with AGC, their board, and, and what they would like to see, and we, at this point, have not been encouraged to develop a carpentry program, a two-year program, but rather, again, a certificate program, and in this case, they would like us to, to work with, with AGC and home builders and area contractors to develop a pre-apprenticeship program that would work for high school students in Sioux Falls, and as part of that, it would be a 10-week paid summer employment opportunity, so the students would be able to continue on from CTE, their carpentry one and two programs, go to Southeast Tech for this pre-apprenticeship programs, and then, and really, the employers get the credit for this because they are the ones that are, are doing the heavy lifting in the sense of pulling together their contacts within the region to create 24 opportunities for these paid internship apprenticeship opportunities for students, so they'll, during that 10 weeks, have the first couple of weeks on campus. Jim Jacobson and his team are working on the, on the curriculum with a lot of input from industry, and that's exactly what I would say our focus needs to be. And it's a, it's a comment that's come up on And it's, it's a comment that's come up on the sector breakfast and I want to reiterate it here, but industry-led, industry-driven. And I think if we do that, if we respond in that manner, our enrollments, other things are, are going to improve at Southeast. So we're very excited about that opportunity along with the others that I mentioned. There's some light diesel training that's been recommended, CDL training that we're doing on a non-credit basis, moving over to a credit basis potentially. So a lot of discussion. And one final note is one of the companies had, at one of our sector breakfast, two of the owners of the company, it's a new company called Windshield, they're the first tenant for Foundation Park, they're building a 200,000 square foot refrigeration, cold storage building out in Foundation Park. But after the sector breakfast, they came up and said, are you guys serious about working with new businesses? And we said, absolutely. And so we've had two meetings now and we're going to have a third here shortly. They want to build and, and have their business up and running by, I think it was next April. And so that's a tall order. 60 new employees and, and they're going to need training and, and hopefully, again, if Southeast can step up and do a good job providing that kind of corporate training as more tenants come to Foundation Park, we want them to be thinking about Southeast Tech as a workforce development arm. So very good work that's been done on campus in terms of that outreach. I guess the, the last item I wanted to mention as a potential program that we're looking pretty seriously, and this one came out from some conversations last May from Globe University. And they approached Southeast Tech or some of their faculty in the veterinary technician program that they have, it was their largest program. Globe is closing, they're teaching out that program through this fall semester, I think they'll be done in January. But they've approached Southeast as, to see if we have any interest in veterinary technician program. And I think there are a couple of things that, you know, obviously there are lots, lots of questions that needed to be answered. We first brought it to our tech council in our May meeting for discussion there. Tech council looked very favorably on the idea. I think Vice President Jacobson has, has brought that to our committees that, that are reviewing new programming and had some discussions there. But the program looks interesting in the sense because there, it would be the only program in South Dakota, veterinary technology program in South Dakota. And Representative Mickelson has indicated that there are several large producers looking at moving to the Sioux Falls region, which would be employers of graduates from the program as, as well as existing need. Academic Affairs sent out a survey to, I think it was 60 area vets to determine wage, salary income and potential employment areas if that was a need area. And that's actually come back fairly, fairly positively, the, the response was, was very strong in relation to, the, the pay rate was 14 to $16 an hour on average. I think 14 is some of the information we're getting from the state and it varies again on the employer as well there. But there's a, a strong interest in, in Southeast exploring that further. So we thought it would be appropriate to bring that to the board's attention because there, there are quite a few hurdles in the certificate area. We can move much more quickly than we can with a, a two-year program as far as the, the hoops and the procedural steps that we need to take at the state level. But I think with the favorable response that we're hearing, it's considering, we're bringing it forward for further review. It will take some upkeep in, in terms of right now that the space is probably our biggest issue as to where that program would be located. McCrossan's Boys Ranch has, has been approached as far as a location for a large animal portion of that and, and that meeting went extremely well. And I think their leadership is coming to campus here in a few weeks to have some more discussions on that. So that would be a, a huge part of our equation in terms of taking care of the large animal portion for us. And, you know, with McCrossan's being located so close to Southeast, we thought that's a, a great fit. So we'll see how that develops. But more to come on, on the future here, but as we, as we work hard to turn enrollment around, I think part of that vision has to be looking down the road at what is coming, what's emerging. And from some of our sector breakfast conversations, from our advisory boards that all of our academic programs have, I think we get some very good insight and advice. And we're, we're doing more work in that regard, I think, in terms of consideration of these programs, you know, coming forward and looking at them very seriously because I think to be responsive, we need to be constantly looking at, at new opportunities, refining current programs, just as you heard from the gen ed team, you know, again, constantly trying to improve our outcomes for our students. So thank you very much.
I just want to say, thank you for all the hard work you're all doing at Southeast Tech. I'm, that's one of the, I'm really excited about serving on the board at Southeast Tech. I'm really excited about some of the things that are going out there and all that you're doing out there. I just think it's such a jewel we have in our community and there's so much need and your leadership and all your guys' work out there is really making it a strong. And we are seeing enrollments increasing and so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I just came from Governor Dugard's Workforce Development Conference and I think you can ask any one of us here and what we would hopefully say is what we're proudest of, of our students. And we had one of our students who actually was here in front of the board a few months back, Dan Voss, who had an interesting pathway through higher ed. He's the student that went through Augustana and then to a USD master's program, finished his program there, was in counseling for a while, just did not feel that was a good fit. And he came back to Southeast Tech under a Build Dakota Scholarship. So they had him as part of a panel conversation today and, and he represented Southeast so well, you would have been, been very proud of, of Dan. And I think Dan just represents a lot of our students. So again, thank you for your time. I conclude the report.
Can I get an, an acknowledgement, a motion to acknowledge the new program development report?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? I just, I again applaud you that all these new programs sound really exciting. You know, we've got some holes to fill with the Globe University Vet Tech program leaving and, or closing and, you know, we've got some real opportunities, I think, so exciting.
The, the outreach to the business community, the sector breakfast, I just think that really has, has been in so many ways a game changer with, I think, both faculty and staff and student just seeing the possibilities and that, that our community is supportive, is behind what we're, what, what you all are doing out there. I just think that's been a huge part of what I've seen as a significant change in atmosphere and attitude and I appreciate that more than you know.
Yeah, thank you again. And I think that's, speaks again to the quality of the programs, to the quality of the faculty, our support services and all of the support they provide for our, our students to help them get through the programs. But it's, one final note, I guess, I, we did some number crunching today in the report out was, as of this point, we are, I think it was 1.8% up over last year's fall start total for total credits. So that's, that's very good. I think we have another AAR, that's including the next AAR with those students, estimated loads for those students signing up for credits. So all in all, it's, it's been a significant effort as all, you're all aware in, in terms of the enrollment challenge, but the campuses responded really well and I think the admissions office is, is working hard. So we're anxious to see where we end up here and we'll be reporting on that in our September meeting as well. So thank you.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, that motion passes and I get a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, we're adjourned. Thanks.
Parents are their child's first teachers and best advocates. The Sioux Falls School Board invites parents, guardians and interested community members to be engaged and knowledgeable about decisions concerning their child's education. There are a variety of opportunities to communicate with your school board. In addition to typical phone, mail and email correspondence, constituents are invited to sign up prior to the start of school board meetings on the second and fourth Mondays of every month at 5:30 PM to address board members. Check out our website, sf.k12.st.us. Hover over our district, then choose policies to learn more about taking an active role in your child's education.